Good evening. We're getting started a little bit late, a little bit of organization. It is 6:50, and I am calling this session, a special session of the Bastrop City Council, to order. Our first order of business tonight is citizen comments. I have several comments in here, most of them were for item 4A. I do not have, I have one comment here that wishes to speak, that I've been able to interpret wishes to speak, under citizen comments. Chris Kirby? Mr. Kirby, if you'll give your name and address. You have three minutes, sir.
All right. I'm a little shocked that I'm the only one on the general citizen comment thing. My name is Chris Kirby. My address is 33 Lost Pines Avenue in Bastrop. And I just like, there, I mean, on the global scale, I just simply like to say, I was just talking to somebody else, it's amazing to me to see a city that participates, and I think that's really cool, especially on issues of importance to all of us. I would also say that we find ourselves in a season of divisiveness, and I think that that's dangerous, and it's toxic, and it's not helpful. And at the end of the day, we face a lot of global challenges to the city and to this county, those being, obviously, us being in the crosshairs of development and growth, all of the things that we've seen. If any of you were at the State of the City meeting, we saw, I won't call it rampant, but certainly, large-scale, large numbers of large developments around the city and around the county and everything else. This is a time for us as citizens led by those of you at the table in front of us to recognize that that, whether we'd like to or not, that's a trend we can't stop. You know, we're in a world where, especially given what the state legislature has handed us, and that is, that inside the city, we can regulate a lot. In the county, we can regulate almost nothing. We're in a world where we are going to see this city transformed. I think the number that I heard at State of the City is we're supposed to grow something like 40% in the next decade. And there's nothing in the world, nothing that, you know, you can move heaven and earth, that's not going to change. If anything, I think that as people see what an incredible place Bastrop is, that number will accelerate. And then the question becomes, what is the city and what does the county become? And there, we have some control. But I think to the extent that we can figure out how to find the bridges across the divides that we may have, the ways that we can figure out how to work together, and how we can come around a common vision, a common purpose of making Bastrop, well, it becomes bigger, making it better. However we each define that is critical. But for us, as citizens, we're really looking to you, the city council. We elected you to work together. We elected you to recognize that, while you may not always agree, that hopefully, at the end of the day, you have our best, the citizens' best interests in mind. As a city, I can say, as somebody who's lived in this county now for three decades, I can say to you that I've seen wonderful things happen in the city of Bastrop in terms of trying to steer what is inevitable, and trying to make this city what it is becoming, while at the same time recognizing its character. That being said, streets aren't free, schools aren't free, parks aren't free, nothing is free. And at the end of the day, that means tax base, and tax base is generated in this state through taxes on property. And residential real estate or commercial real estate gives the tax base that gives the money that gives us the streets and gives us the services that we need. If we're talking about trying to have ambulances, fire engines, or schools, those have to be paid for, and we'd like to be able to pay those people who work in those well, and that requires tax base. And so, to the extent that we can bring development into the core and not have it sprawling endlessly into the county would be a great thing, we're looking to you to be able to guide that with wisdom and with good intention. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Since I announced Mr. Kirby as being the only citizen comment signed up, I've had two more signed up as citizen comments. Carlos Liriano. Welcome, sir. Name and address in three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Carlos Liriano, and I reside at 1208 Church Street. I also own Lost Pines Toyota. And I have, I have about 72 employees. So tonight, I'm here to represent them and their families, and tell you that at Lost Pines Toyota, we, sometimes we have issues that we have to go to City Hall. Since Sylvia has come on board, every time we've gone to City Hall with an issue, she and her staff have been knowledgeable and willing to assist in every way. That doesn't mean that we get the answers we want every time, but they have been willing to assist. I'm also trying to bring more investment into Bastrop. I personally am making more investment in Bastrop. With that investment, I need a city that functions. I need a city that works together. I go to see Sylvia with an idea, and she's willing to listen. Sometimes, she has to bring her staff in. She's always willing to explore and have a vision about what's possible for Bastrop. I have to tell you, my experience, and I'm only telling you my experience, my experience is that she's knowledgeable, she's committed to Bastrop, and she's willing to help. Since coming to Bastrop, I have been involved with many organizations. And when I get involved with those organizations, sometimes I run across folks that need help, whether they are Hispanic, African-American, rich, poor, whatever. The help that our minority community has received, in my opinion, since Bastrop has been under the leadership of Sylvia, has been outstanding. She has opened the city for communication. She has introduced her staff to the minority community in Bastrop. It hasn't always been that way, okay? And I'm here to tell you that I appreciate the work that she's doing, I appreciate the work that the council is doing, I appreciate the time and effort that y'all spend, but we have to work together, and we have to go forward with the vision of a great Bastrop. The time for arguing over nonsense is over. We have so many more important things to do to accomplish what we are capable of. And I hope everyone can see that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll remind everybody, this is a business meeting, and you can save your applause till you get out in the parking lot, because we're going to try to move through this. The next one under citizen comments is Linda Curtis. Name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Linda Curtis. I live on South Shore Road, just outside the city of Bastrop. And I'm with the League of Independent Voters, which is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization at LIVTX.org. And I really like what Carlos just said. I appreciate that the city manager has a lot of good friends here in Bastrop, and I applaud her for making those friends and doing some good things here in Bastrop. I have also been very outspoken, as some of you probably know. I have issues with city management, and we've put those online at our website, in the news section for you to read. I'm not here to speak for or against the city manager. What I'm here to tell you is that I've been getting these weird contacts this week, by text, by phone, and email, asking me about some kind of information. I presume it's the document or report that was mentioned after the last meeting by the city council when they came out from executive session, and they said, "We accept the report." Okay? We have not seen this report, and I wanted to spell any rumors that are going around in this community that I somehow got this report. I don't have it. I definitely want it, and I hope every single person in this room gets a chance to review it. Let's all have at it. You may decide that after you read this report, it's a bunch of bunk, you don't believe it, or maybe you do believe it, but you still support Sylvia, or not. That's fine. We can agree and disagree. It's the meanness that needs to end. And I'm very happy to participate in ending any meanness. I've tried my best not to be mean, but to be very forthright and clear. So let's have open government. Let's get this out on the table, and let the community see what the problems may or may not be. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. The rest of the comments that I have are items specific. Is there somebody that wants to speak on the general citizen comments that I have not seen? State your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
I did sign up this morning at the front desk and turned in my information. I have witnesses.
Okay.
I believe you.
All right. My name is Susan Long. I'm a lifelong resident of Bastrop, born here. And only time I left was to attend the University of Texas, get my degree, then I went to work for the state health department, and I traveled all over the state. So I got smart and moved back into my childhood home in Bastrop, and I love it. I wouldn't trade it for anything. Now, here's the other thing that I don't want to trade or give away, is Sylvia. She is an endless source of energy, of information, of, you know, enthusiasm. I can't give you enough words to explain what she's about. But one thing I will tell you, a few little items that I have, is that she has, you know, been, she has 10 years of service, and she's got a background in ethics. She's participated in seven-plus national training seminars at the international level for a city managers, and she's trained city managers from all over the state. I just think that she is representative of what we all could be if we had the health and the drive and the enthusiasm that she has. She has energy, galore. She has enthusiasm. She has training. She has experience. What else could you want? And if she wants to have a place out in the country, I won't call it the country, I happen to be on a municipal utility district board out at the colony, but I'll tell you, she's got to recharge her batteries at some time. Let's, don't go after her because she's not living in the city 100% of the time. Guess what? She never turns her brain off. I'm sure she dreams about the city at night. But I've just never met anybody more devoted to this city. And like I said, I've lived here a lifetime, except for those times that I mentioned, going to UT and making a mistake and living in Austin. So, yeah, yeah. I got back here as soon as I could, and I love it, wouldn't trade it for anything. And we are in good hands with Sylvia. I think she is the best-trained human being that we've ever had. That's not taking anything away from anybody else, it's just that she has, you know, done things on an international level. So, folks, we are very fortunate, and let's count our blessings that we have Sylvia to be on our staff. Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you. Okay, we will, that's all the citizen comments I have with the... Okay, Ms. Williams, I have you sign up for everything but citizen comments, but please come right on up. You're good.
My understanding is when you turn in a consent, you are signing up for citizen's comment. Okay.
If you'll state your name and address, and you have the three minutes, please, ma'am.
My name is Doris Williams. My name is Doris Williams. I live at 414 Bullhead Road in Bastrop, Texas. I will be mindful of my allocated time. You need to pull this out, the agenda if you have it, so you can follow along. If not, you can listen. I'm here to speak on items 3A, items 3B, 4A, and item 5. If I understand item 3A correctly, I am in support of item 3A. Pertaining to item 3B, consider and act on requiring the city manager to meet with Mayor Nelson. I need more information to make an informed decision, because the operative word for me is requiring the city manager to meet with Mayor Nelson. As a layperson, not involved in the city of Bastrop government, I don't know what this means. As it is worded, I am not in support of item 3B. 4A, executive session, I am not in support of item 4A. I am not in support of item 5. That said, I was born in Bastrop and recently moved back to Bastrop. There has been a lot of living during the time I was born in Bastrop in the 1940s, and the time my ancestors left, felt they had to leave, and my subsequent return. I'll call it coming full circle. This is where I started, and this is where I plan to eventually end. I am excited about all the progress and positive changes made by city management. I like the diversity of women and people of color on the city council that speaks positive about the citizens of Bastrop. I give praise to the city of Bastrop management by employing competent and qualified people. Minor interaction with the city personnel has been positive. Kudos, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, once again, I have comments here, they're agenda items specific. If somebody wants to speak in the citizen, general citizen comments, then we will move on. Move on to item 3A, consider and act on approving Resolution Number 2024-11, approving a bid for Moab Construction for $84,449 for the completion of the renovations at City Hall for the new BEDC offices. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, I don't have a slide, somehow it was missed. This item is a BEDC-approved item. It was, your agenda was amended late because the BEC convened their meeting on Monday, just in time to amend the agenda. As many of you are aware, the dual hat that I wear is as the interim BEDC director. The BEDC lease is coming up at the end of the year. BEDC staff will be occupying vacant space in City Hall, and the cost of the renovation is expected to be $84,449. That renovation went out for bid, we received three bids. Moab Construction is the low bidder. They have done prior work on the utility business and also in other parts of the city. The BEDC Board unanimously approved the bid. However, as you are also aware, every action the BEDC takes requires council authorization. This action is approving what the BEDC approved to move forward with the renovations, to have staff occupy by the end of the year.
Council City Manager has laid this item out. Do you have any questions for staff? Seeing none indicated, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second one from Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion? I see none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 3B, consider and act on requiring the city manager to meet with Mayor Nelson. Like Ms. Williams, I'm confused as to what this is about. So, Madam City Manager.
I don't know where the confusion lies, Mayor. We had several emails back and forth as to it. So for the council and the public to understand, I meet with every single council member, with the exception of Mayor Nelson and the exception of Councilmember Lee. I meet one hour or so with them every single week. We have an issue tracker that we keep, a team's an issue, an item, it gets resolved. As they have issues or questions that arise, I address it. The mayor and I used to meet on Wednesdays, prior Mayor Connie Schrader and I used to meet on Wednesdays. That was a habit that was picked up with Mayor Nelson. Somewhere at the end of the investigation and the ethics complaint, those meetings waned off and were removed from the calendar. The prior city manager, Linda Umble, when she met with the mayor, she met with the mayor and the mayor pro tem. And to quote Mayor Nelson, the reason was because they had no trust or confidence in the prior city manager. Given the situation that we are in today, the mayor asked to meet, and I refused without the mayor pro tem in attendance. The mayor declined, and so there was what I considered a directive, and I reminded that I work for the council collective, and if the council so chose to issue a resolution, I would honor the resolution. But at this point, I would like a second person in the room.
Thank you, ma'am. I will, I will say that I never issued a directive, and if it was interpreted that way, then my apologies. There were two types of meetings that, which I referenced in our series of email. One was the agenda review that you already referenced. It had always included the mayor pro tem, the city secretary, and other staff that you deemed necessary for that. I still, I don't have a problem with that. We continue doing that. The other is a weekly update that you, that you referenced. Due to scheduling conflict, it wasn't because of any investigation. My scheduled meetings with you had been canceled for several weeks. These were always around 9:00 or 9:30 on Wednesday mornings. Sometimes, normally, the city secretary had always been in attendance for some time. I see no reason, nor do I have any desire to restrict you from having one, one or anybody of your choosing to attend those meetings. I did express a concern with the mayor pro tem, as that takes away the individual council member aspect. Additionally, as there are two council members in attendance, there's the possibility of a walk-in quorum should one of them discuss, or one of us discuss from the meeting with another, items from that meeting with another council member. Other than those concerns, I really don't have an issue with anybody being in on our weekly informational exchange meetings. And so if we can just move forward, if you want a directive from council strictly saying that you want a second member there, I have no problem with that at all, if such is required. But right now, I feel that the information relative to meetings with, between the city manager and the mayor has been resolved. With that being said, council, if you have a, have a motion you wish to make, I will entertain a motion at this point in time.
I'll make a motion for the city manager and the mayor to meet on the condition that a third person will be present at the city manager's request of that person.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second one from Councilmember Fossler. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem.
So, can you restate your motion?
Yes. My motion was to recommend that the mayor and city manager meet and allow a third person, and at the request of the city manager, meaning...
So, when you say recommend, are you directing Sylvia to meet with the mayor?
It seems like the direction, well, it seems like 3A was the requirement of it, so I am making the amendment to have a third person in there. Does that make sense?
It does. I think the thing I'm wondering about is, I don't necessarily think that we should direct our city manager to have to meet with anyone.
Well, just for the record, I am completely fine. Meeting with the mayor, the issue was meeting with the mayor alone. I will happily take that directive, and in fact, that was my email, that I would take a directive from the council.
That was my intent, was, that's what I perceived, and that's why I motion.
Okay, fair enough.
And if such assuages the concerns, I have, such assuages the concerns, I have no issue with that. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My suggestion would be if that kind of meeting's going to take place, the third person in the room ideally would be, I haven't talked about it with any of my own staff, but assistant city manager, department head, whoever's relevant to the conversation. To circle back your attention to what the mayor pointed out earlier, under our system of government, if hypothetically, the mayor, mayor pro tem, are meeting with the city manager, any item they discuss, they're precluded from talking to any other council member outside of the meeting because of the Open Meetings Act walk-in quorum provision. So if you proceed along these lines, my suggestion would be the third person would be a staffer, and under this motion, it'd be at the city manager's discretion.
Is that agreeable with you, Sylvia?
Yes, absolutely.
And I believe that's what your motion said, a third person.
Yes. So my motion will, my intent of my motion, then, at the council's recommendation, would be to be, avoid a walk-in quorum or being able to share. So I am happy to make, I'm in my motion to make it a staffer at Sylvia's choice.
Are you all for that second?
I'll second that as well.
Okay, Council, we have a motion by Councilmember Meyer, a second by Councilmember Fossler. Council, y'all have to help me. If somebody else wants to speak on this, raise your hand, but I don't see any other indication. Councilmember Fossler, I see your hand moving.
I've been wanting this for a long time, so thanks for working it out.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Meyer, a second by Councilmember Plunkett. No further discussion. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move now to item 4A. Earlier, there was an email blast from an organization here locally sent to their membership as well as other interested parties. Comment from that email stated that I had made allegations of seeking the removal of our qualified city manager. Both statements are patently false, as I've made no such allocations, nor have I stated that I am seeking her removal. Information was brought forward to this council to consider an executive session. To my knowledge, it has not been made available for public consumption as of yet. As an elected member of this body, I am obligated to speak with members of the council in the appropriate setting, under the Texas Open Meetings Act, to determine if they choose to move forward. If they do, we will take appropriate action to look into matter. Should they choose not to pursue, the council and the city can get on with other city business. Under 551.071, consultation with attorney, any legal questions that council may have should be conveyed in closed session. However, as a portion of the executive session is also under 551.074, personnel matters, the employee under discussion has the right... personnel matters, the employee under discussion has the right to bring that discussion into open session. Should the City Manager request that the discussion be moved to open session, I, as the presiding officer, see no reason to deny that request. I will again advise Council that should be any legal concerns or questions, we will move to executive session. Other than that, all further discussion will be in open session if desired by the employee. I will reiterate that this item is for the consideration of the elected body on a specific matter. For any action to be taken on the resolution before, it will take a majority vote of three, whether in open or closed session. As this item was prompted by some hard work done by Councilmember Lee, I have chosen to accord her five minutes to introduce any specifics of this item. I will take following five-minute comments from other members, if indicated, at the end of her introduction. I will now read the agenda item. City Council shall convene in a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding resolution unnumbered of the City Council in the city of Bastrop, Texas, initiating an investigation by the City Council into the conduct of the City Manager. Madam City Manager, do you wish to keep this in open session or move to executive session?
Mayor, I will most certainly discuss this in open session.
Outstanding. Again, it's a business meeting. I appreciate y'all's passion, though. We are moving into, we are remaining in open session. As I stated earlier, Councilmember Lee, you have five minutes to give us...
Mayor, could I ask a question before we start anything regarding this resolution? And this probably is going to be to our attorney. I need help understanding how this resolution was drafted, for it was not at the entire City Council that participated in this resolution. I found out about a resolution that wasn't even, no one had input on a resolution and decided to have a resolution at our last executive session, so this is quite a surprise. So, how was this drafted, and who drafted this?
Mayor, Council, the resolution was drafted by me, at the request of Councilmember Lee and Mayor Nelson. It doesn't take a vote of the Council to ask me to draft a document. Any single member of the Council can ask me to, and has several times in the past. Staff can ask me to draft a resolution. It's a routine service that I provide.
Thank you, Alan. It was, it's just the first time, this was kind of an extraordinary thing. I've never experienced this. Maybe Councilmember Plunkett has, you've been on longer than I have, but it's just, it was a very extraordinary thing, so I appreciate your explanation.
I have a follow-up question on that, Alan.
Mayor Pro Tem.
The wording that went into the agenda, did you write that as well?
The agenda item?
Yes.
Yes, that's language I provided at the request of the mayor and Councilmember Lee.
So, when we called an investigation to visit Bastrop, the wording on that particular item, that was R-2023-129, it said potential issues have been raised about certain interactions between particular leaders of the city and to visit Bastrop. And you and I had talked about that, and you advised that it's appropriate to say as little as legally required to keep all options open, leaving room to get more specific as more information is gathered and investigation proceeds. But comparing that to this language, initiating an investigation by the City Council into the conduct of the City Manager, it seems to violate your own advice, and I don't quite get that. Yeah. Can you speak to that? I mean, you could have worded it in such a way that we could have talked about it, but because this was so inflammatory and so alarming, they're here because of that. And it was literally just the words in the agenda. I mean, and I really kind of object to it. So, I was, didn't realize that you had worded it. In fact, it was so inconsistent with prior practice, I'd assumed that you hadn't worded it.
I normally don't disclose what Councilmembers and I discuss on the phone, but you can certainly feel free, Mayor Pro Tem. I can just say that the agenda language that was provided is consistent with the requested language that I received. I put it in the form of an agenda item, following the same template we always use.
Okay.
These were not my word choices.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Fossler.
Thank you. I appreciate that we're ready to talk in public. I do have some legal questions before proceeding. If we could, please convene into executive briefly.
Please.
Thank you.
We are, it is seven-twenty-five, and Council is moving to executive session. We need to identify. Council has returned from executive session, are now in open session. As I stated earlier, now that we have moved this to open session, I will accord Councilmember Lee five minutes to introduce any specifics.
Thank you, Mayor. So, on November twelfth, I submitted a memo to the Council during executive session in conjunction with the annual evaluation of the City Manager. The memo contains information I found to be concerning in regards to questionable spending and actions taken by the City Manager regarding city funds, as well as allegations that staff are operating in a hostile work environment under her leadership. Since May, I've been collecting information through records requests and my capacity as a Councilmember to substantiate information now contained in the memo. After presenting the information to the Council as a whole, with the exception of Councilmember Meyer, the consensus was the Council needed time to review the memo and reconvene to determine if a formal investigation and/or action regarding suspension or termination of employment was warranted at my asking. Please note, the memo provided to the Council, although comprehensive in and of itself, does not contain all concerns I have regarding the management of the City Manager. There's been a lot of discussions in the past week after that meeting in the community regarding a document presented in executive session to the Council. I began working on this document in May. No one knew the document existed. So, it's very surprising to me that after one week, the entire community knows there is a memo. And the fact that members of the community know that the document exists is concerning because per the Texas Open Meetings Act and the law requires executive sessions, discussions remain confident to protect sensitive information and maintain the integrity of the deliberative process. We all agreed on that. And I know that people in the community have formed personal relationships with the City Manager as well as developers and businesses. However, please understand, our role as Councilmembers is to provide oversight of the management of our city. And in spite of how I feel about the City Manager or how the public feels about the City Manager as a person, emotionally or politically, those feelings should not take precedence over ensuring the City Manager's operating in a manner that ensures responsible governance. I am not saying every single decision and everything she has done is wrong. I've given her accolades where they were worthy, but there are decisions that the City Manager has made and actions the City Manager has taken that should give anyone pause for concern. And if I or the mayor or any other person sitting in that chair committed the acts outlined in the memo, there would be outrage and, quite frankly, a public demand for removal from the position. No matter how much the City Manager is loved, no one should be allowed to abuse their power. And if a valid concern is brought to the Council and that this has occurred, the Council is obligated to investigate the matter and take appropriate action if proven. And I believe the memo presented to the Council is worthy of consideration and action. Council has had a week to digest it. I'm open to answering any questions that they may have regarding the memo. The City Manager has a response. I've suggested to the Council that we do, we have a formal investigation so that an independent party can review the memo, or our Ethics Commission review the memo, because we are split on this matter. And I think it would be appropriate for an individual third party or independent third party to come in and review the memo. And if they find that there is some wrongdoing that needs to be addressed, then it needs to be addressed. Allowing an outside party to make a determination regarding whether or not the memo warrants execution or executive action is the best way to ensure that the final decision is made in a manner that is impartial and unbiased. You don't know what you don't know. If you are so sure that the City Manager has done nothing wrong, then allow for the process to, allow for the process to be followed so that the review of the information is given to an independent party to determine that. That is all I have at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Does any other member wish to make a comment?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes, so the alarming thing, let me just make it clear. What is alarming is the agenda item four A. It's not this allegation that the report got out, or this, these allegations got out. That's not the concern. The concern is, on four A, it says, "An investigation by the City Council into the conduct of the City Manager," which makes an alarm go off, because everyone, I'm sure in this room and the overflow room, wants to know what the heck is going on. Sylvia's doing a great job. She's one of the best City Managers we've had. I've been in P&amp;Z seven, six years. P&amp;Z six years, Council a year and a half, and I have never seen city government operate as efficiently and as well as it does under Sylvia Correio Trevino.
Please, we're attempting to conduct a business meeting here. This is not a concert, please.
So, let's don't get conflated and confused about saying this report got out, because it didn't. Nobody wants this out. The allegations in this, not just against our City Manager, but city employees who are doing an amazing job, are very, very concerning. So, this is an alarm, four A, that's an alarm going off. So, let's establish that. Also, I would like to remind everyone here, thank you so much for supporting and participating, because this is what it's about. We know what we have to do to support our City Manager. We communicate with her. She gives us so many opportunities. Sylvia loves this town, and I can tell a lot of people love her. Sometimes we, when we do the good things and we do the right things, some people don't like that. But we do them anyway, you know it? Because we love this town. And I can tell you, because of my love for this town and all of our citizens, I support Sylvia to the hundredth degree and back, because I love you and she loves you too.
Does anybody else on Council wish to make a comment at this time? Mr. City Attorney, I'll ask you a question again here that I asked in closed session. When I had my discussions with you, did I apprise you of a foregone conclusion, or did I say that I had any kind of expectation how this would turn out?
No, Mayor, you did not.
And secondly, if the Council so desires, a City Councilmember could make a motion to either initiate an investigation or not initiate an investigation, everybody can go home. Am I correct?
That could be the outcome tonight.
And we would poll the audience and see if anybody still wanted to speak.
Yes, if we have people who have signed up to speak, then under the Open Meetings Act, they still have that opportunity to speak. But if there's a direction you're going, you could certainly ask them if they still want to exercise that right or not.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
So, Mayor...
Yes, ma'am.
Because this item includes me, and because this item includes a document that the City Attorney has already deemed he could not protect from the public, and I'm going to address point by point, I would like my time.
Okay, that's certainly understandable. I will ask for clarification, because the document was distributed in executive session, we are now placing it into the public arena, correct?
That would take a motion by Council.
It's complicated, Mayor and Council, and I tried to indicate that to you in my earlier responses. I think the document is a public document at this point. We haven't released the document. I'm not aware of any requests for the document. What makes it something that I advised you to be sensitive with is the fact that our Code of Ethics says that information conveyed in executive session shall not be conveyed to the public unless it's approved by the Council, by the City Manager, or by the City Attorney. So, if someone does that, then they're at risk under the Code of Ethics. That has nothing to do with state law or the Public Information Act. So, there's, it's an argument about what status the document's in now, but the fact that people are talking about it, referring to it, and that sort of thing is going to strengthen the public nature of the document with every breath.
So, to ensure that we're complying with all the Open Records and Open Meetings Act, we should take a motion to release the information that contained in that document to the public domain?
I think it's within your purview. Failure to vote to release it may not change the public nature of it.
Council, what is your desire? I will certainly entertain a motion to release this information or allow this information to be released in the public domain. Madam City Manager.
I have a question. How are we to discuss the document if it's not being released publicly?
Point by point here.
So, we're releasing it publicly. Is that correct, Alan?
By default, it's being released publicly. That's my, that's the interpretation that I received earlier.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, I'm not aware of a way to withhold the document that we're talking about publicly.
So, then, Mayor, if, since I wrote the document, I feel like I should be able to explain the document, because they don't even know what they're disputing or what she's going to dispute. I should be able to explain it since I wrote it before you give your response, is what I'm saying, because they don't know what I wrote.
I think you've had your opportunity.
No, actually, I haven't.
I don't agree on that at all.
Please, let me preside over the meeting. I've allowed everybody the opportunity. This is a really strange circumstance in that there was a document shared in executive session that are now being talked about in public. To the point of Councilmember Lee, it is her document that the City Manager wants to address point by point. May I say that, are you addressing, Madam City Manager, by the points as indicated in the original email or original memo, or are you addressing it in your own numerical process?
Exactly as stated in the memo.
Okay. I'm going to suggest that we allow the Councilmember who put this together to state the first comment, then you can do a rebuttal.
We're going to be here all night.
And she's already done that.
She has done that.
She was already...
She did it in executive session.
She did it just now for five minutes.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you just did.
No.
I'm sorry, she did a synopsis of it. And now we're going, now we're...
Right, and now we'll have point by point. She'll have the data up there. Well, I mean, how many ways does it need to be told?
I haven't told it, Councilmember Plunkett.
You have a point and a counterpoint is my...
They don't know what's in the memo, point by point, because...
They do. There it is.
I should be able to explain why it's in the memo, or why I even created the memo.
It's up there.
And you can do that after Ms. Correio gets the chance to talk.
I should be able to explain.
Yes. Mayor, Mayor, please, could I, could I ask you to please be considerate of our citizens? Ms. Correio has this up here. We could be here all night. This is why people don't want to participate, because they're going to have to sit here all night. Could you please be considerate of our citizens? Let Ms. Sylvia, Ms. Correio present this, because it is laid out. We do not need to hear any more of Councilmember Lee's explanation, because she's already said that, and as Ms. Correio will explain up here. So, please, respect our citizens.
I haven't been able to explain it, because they're just seeing it for the first time. There was a reason why I created the memo. That summary was, that summary was only explaining why the memo was created. I should be able to lay out what information I found, so that the public understands how we got to this point. I didn't ask for all these people to come. I didn't ask for this to go one-on-one. I asked for us to resolve it as a council, make council.
All right, please, if I may, I am very cognizant of our citizens' participation. I'm also very cognizant of the fact that when you try to stifle public debate, then you're not providing the citizens with the full realm of the discussion. Do I want this to immediately go away? I would love for it to immediately go away, as I stated in my question to this... I would love for it to immediately go away, as I stated in my question to the to the city attorney. I have no idea what that indicated. Councilmember Meyer.
Report. So just.
I'm going to finish first, please, ma'am. So my my point is, and Councilmember Plunkett was trying to make a point, that that we did not need to discuss it, but we're allowing a counterpoint to a point that has not been made. The citizens have no idea what's in this process.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, please.
So it is very clear with the rebuttal what is in this and the allegations. So they do not need to sit through two. Let the person who has named an item, please, 4A, respond to the allegations. That's all we want. They want that is all we have to do.
Councilmember Meyer will remind you, I have made no allegations and there's no allegation been made at this point in time, to my knowledge. There's also been no effort on my part to recall the city manager or to remove the city manager on there. So as long as we deal with the premise that there has not been any effort to, we're merely bringing it to the city council's attention, they can make y'all can make a decision. Y'all are the voting members. There's five voting members on this.
Could we vote on how to proceed, please? Could we vote on?
You're you're entitled.
I would like to make a motion to please, could we hear our city manager's report and response? Would like to make a motion currently, right now, to hear from our city manager.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer, a second from, I believe, is Mayor Protim Kirkland. Any further discussion, seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Fossler?
No.
Thank you, council. Motion passes three to two, the two dissenting votes from Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Fossler, but the motion does carry. Mayor, Madam City Manager, please proceed.
Thank you, mayor. The report that was distributed that the city attorney said was not privileged contained redacted information about a staff member, and that staff member has given the permission for some of that information to be shared today. The allegations are 15 points of questionable spending totaling over $2 million. Councilmember Lee cites my international city manager ethics, my Texas city manager ethics, and the ethics of the city of Bastrop. I've been in public service for 27 years. I got fired from a job in Corpus Christi because I would not do exactly what is listed in this memo. So we're going to go through it point by point because I have nothing to hide.
Please.
So I'm going to start off with Ecclesiastes. There's a time for everything, right? There's a time to cast away stones and there's a time to build. And my hope is that today, all of those stones are cast away and we use it to build a beautiful city because, Lord knows, we have a lot of work to do than this. Assertion number one, the Friesen Nichols contract for $371,118 was erroneously stated. The city manager erroneously stated in a budget workshop that the report had not been completed. It was followed up by a memo by Assistant City Manager Andres, and the assertion in the last points of the memo is, what was she trying to accomplish in trying to spend $371,000 again? And the reality of it is, nothing, because I simply, number one, forgot the memo existed and number two, is I correctly stated in that hearing that no matter what the memo contained, it was already outdated. We are moving at such a fast pace that this memo exists, the city did indeed pay $371,000. It was engaged four months after my arrival. That train had left the station. But let me tell you what I'm concerned about in that memo is driving this city to bankruptcy. That is my main concern in this memo. Now, what does that really mean? What does it really mean that I don't agree with the $371,000 memo? Well, the engineer that Councilmember Lee, the engineer who produced that memo, Councilmember Lee picked up the phone and called. That engineer believes that the sky is falling. That engineer believes that we're going to be so far behind in our wastewater treatment plant that we need to hurry up and get started. That engineer stands to gain an $8.9 million contract, as you see up on the screen. This contract was presented to the council and council put a stop. I did put a stop on all capital improvement projects, every single one of them, because why? I don't want to drive the city to bankruptcy. I don't know how we're going to pay for it all. It is that simple. In addition to that $8.9 million, there was an additional contract for what is being called engineering oversight by yet another third party for $856,000. So there's an assertion out there that we don't have enough engineers on staff. I will debunk that myth here shortly. That's $9.8 million of just a study, of just a design phase. That doesn't even include construction. If you take into account that design fees are about 15% of a total project cost, you're looking at a $60 million project. That's only to get us to 6 million gallons. This is the contract language. At the conclusion of the preliminary engineering study and upon the request of the city by Friesen Nichols, they will develop a proposal and a scope of services for the design and engineering phase. They buried that language in the study language, knowing for sure they were going to get a contract of $8.9 million or more. So here's the real issue in the contract on why I'm telling you that is not a sufficient study. Number one, the data is outdated. Number two, the data is questionable. But according to Friesen Nichols, we only need to go to 6 million gallons a day. This is verbatim into their contract. But when you read further, it says, but we know you're going to need 12. So let's do 60 times 2. Take into account the time value of money, you're in the $150 million range. So that's not the best of it yet. What we just got built, that we haven't even been able to ribbon-cut, is already outdated technology. They say in their own report, by the way, when you go to build your second plant, you're going to need to do it differently. This one's not going to work anymore. Might work, we'll have to retrofit some things because phosphorus levels that are going to be coming out of this plant aren't going to meet T C Q requirements anymore. So that's the current wastewater debt. It's $139 million. You wonder why I forgot the memo existed or didn't even want to address it? Because we're not ready for it. The assertion is that I was untruthful. This is verbatim. The city manager advised council of a stop work order on the wastewater treatment plant due to ongoing punch list issues. Absolutely right. She put a stop work order of all projects due to internal financial controls, and this action was a contributing factor to all of the current city projects being behind schedule. Yes, I did stop. The punch list as of 2/4/24. Now, remind you, I started in October of '22. That plant was one year overdue when I started. One year. The staff that is so so admirably defended in here that doesn't work here anymore was managing that project. On 2/4/24, the punch list for that project was 152 items, and we couldn't get it done. So what happens? I go, what are we doing? Corolo Engineering eloquently mentioned in the document. They were paid to be our construction oversight. $179 million, but yet I got 152 items. I have an outfall that failed. I have people downstream at Hunter's Cross and yelling because of flooding. There's an outfall at the wastewater treatment plant that failed before day one. This engineer was also paid $27,153 to review that same study Friesen Nichols put out. So I beg the question, what was our engineering staff doing? And my answer is, they don't work here anymore. Now, second point. This is a report. Remember, the assertion is, it's my fault, it's overdue. This is a wastewater report. This is a project report in February. According to the then director of engineering, the construction time estimate was not realistic. The engineer, KSA, changed the project manager, changed the inspector, the engineer was not being responsive. The contractor changed the PM three times. They changed the superintendent. The contractor lost a lot of workers, material delays, errors and omissions, HVAC, chlorine. We cannot even occupy the administration building because the HVAC is oversized and dripping in that building. Now, still unable to be occupied. I said the plant is online. It is. It is treating 500,000 gallons of wastewater. When I came here, they said, plant one and plant two are so bad that if you hit them with the weed eater, the plant's going to go down. Guess what's not true? I'm using ARPA money, free money from the federal government, to rehab one and two so that I don't have to go into debt yet on plant three, the one I can't even get up and occupied. So yes, I did remove the director of engineering. I did remove Corolo Engineering and all other third parties on the project. I put instead my building official, who is a master electrician. I put instead my assistant city manager, who's been with the city for 17 years, and I brought on board Juan Pedales, my old assistant city manager and water wastewater director for the city of Corpus Christi. Councilmember Lee refers to them as unqualified in that report. Once I removed them from the project, the director of engineering resigned. Much of what is in this report is stemming from that. So what is our plan for the future of wastewater? Well, it ain't to continue digging that number any deeper. There are new technologies that monetize a wastewater treatment plant. What does that mean? That means I don't use a clarifier. I use membranes. That means what comes out of it is effluent, better than effluent. It's drinkable, potable water, so I don't have to keep taking water out of the aquifer and building new wells and building more money. I partnered with Correx because guess what? They get to pay 50% of the bill. And it's monetizing the wastewater plant so that the rate payers don't have to continue to pay the rates. We figure out a way to do it better and more efficient. So did I miss the report? Yeah. Do you understand why I missed the report? Yeah. Do you understand why nobody works here anymore? Yeah. Do you understand why I don't want to get into debt?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the assertion is, the oversight of the engineering projects are inadequate and the budget for engineering is over budget. 3A, 2021, B for Sylvia, BS, B for Sylvia. This was a staff member, not a professional engineer, yet I continue to hear from the contingent that I don't have enough engineers on staff. All engineering was third-party project management. All project management engineer, I'm sorry, was third-party. Between FY '21 and FY '24, that's how much we spent with just those two firms, more than $1.5 million. How do you keep doing that? Well, you tap the development fund. It's hidden from the general fund. It's tapped the development fund. I came on board, I separated those funds. The development fund is its own fund now. Those funds tapped the general fund. We can't continue to do that. The general fund pays for police and parks and library and everything else. I did an engineering restructure. None of those engineers worked for us, and the ones who do had to reapply. It's called IDIQ, meaning indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity. It's a competing of firms for the best product and the best price. I can't go out and ask an engineer to give me a price. I have to deal with qualifications only. But this puts them against each other. I have two project managers. One is already a PE. He passed his PE exam. He does not have the time and grade, so he doesn't have the seal, but he has all of the qualifications. The other has worked for the Army Corps of Engineers and will sit for her PE in early 2025. These are two people the prior director did not want to hire. We brought everything in-house and we have been more responsive. The engineering review contract is now only $67,000. In this assertion continues that I brought in a friend and there was deceptive information to the council about the expertise of Mr. Pedales. There's an assertion that I removed KSA and that I was part of the delay of the project. I showed you that punch list. We're in litigation. Mr. Pedales has over 41 years of engineering experience, 21 of those of the city of Corpus Christi wastewater department. The city of Corpus Christi has 99 lift stations compared to Bastrop's 19. Six plants versus Bastrop's two. 3,000 miles of wastewater lines as opposed to 80. Hundreds of millions in a capital improvement project. I manage the city of Corpus Christi budget. It was $1 billion and a half dollars then. Assertion number two, I abused signatory authority by allowing him to work on the project without a signed professional services agreement. The purchasing policy allows me a $50,000 cap on professional services when I need to bring in somebody to help lift the load. I did that. Our engineering contracts are riddled with insurance, et cetera, requirements. This professional engineering contract was no different. There was communication with the legal team on, how can I change the insurance requirements? He's an engineer, for God's sake. What's he going to do? Get a paper cut? Why is there so many insurance requirements required? And we went through this with bond for construction also. We had a requirement that required contractors to get a bond well before the project started. He assisted with the closeout. He assisted with getting the plant online. He existed with the he assisted with the chemicals and the process evaluation and startup. The risk was on Mr. Pedales. No contract, no payment. His first payment didn't occur until after the contract was signed. Mr. Pedales is paid to date $11,800 compared to the, how much? Six figures? So further, recent budget amendments reveal the city is over budget in engineering because the city staff lacks the expertise and knowledge needed to lead complex technical projects. Interviews with Renee Aguilar, Corolo Engineering, Fabiola de Carvajal, prior director of engineering, Tony Bonodono, MWM Engineering, would provide more context on the subject matter. At the urging of Councilmember Fossler, the city manager finally posted the position on or about Monday, November 4. That's incorrect information. That position has been posted. We have been unable to recruit. We did finally recruit a candidate who will hopefully, after he hears this mess, may not want to apply anymore. We did finally get a qualified candidate that I hope will join our staff. Our third-party reviews have been reduced to $67,000 because it's all in-house. Second assertion, somehow it was my fault the intersection improvements didn't occur. Those intersection improvements included Hassler in '71, '71 in Childers, and '71 in 304. $207,500 was funded by the BEDC. The study was $22,500. My fault those didn't occur. So she cites a transcript of the meeting, requiring that a resolution would need to be brought to the board. No such resolution occurred, and in fact, $185,000 was refunded to the BEDC. Now, mind you, there's $2 million number hanging out there that I've taken or misused or misappropriated, refunded to the BEDC. Guess what? I wasn't even the interim BEDC director when this resolution went through. I took over in March of '23. That memo's dated December of '22.
Right now, kind of at our feasibility level.
Better than that. Here's the actual video.
The estimate for all of these priority and short-term improvements is the $8 to $12 million range. There are a lot of challenges here, particularly with drainage. Those two U-turn lane extensions are actually right next to the trunk lines that take all the drainage down to the river, and so there could be some impacts there, but we're not to that point yet, but our preliminary estimates are $8 to $12 million.
But 207.
Great job. Counsel, any further questions? This is information only, and you can start thinking, looking in your shaking out the couch cushions, looking for $8 to $12 million to get those all fixed. So good luck.
Right now, kind of at our feasibility level.
So next assertion. So, next assertion, $40,280. My fault the comprehensive plan was delayed because I put a halt. I did put a halt. On June the 11th, I told the council, we need to focus on the master transportation plan, we need to figure out how we're gonna pay for that 100 and plus million drainage plan that has been presented to the city. Still issues with the B3 code, we've got no business starting a comprehensive plan at this time. If you understand the sequence of development, right now, the cart is driving the horse. I don't have a comprehensive plan because I don't even know where I'm gonna be able to flush a toilet, because I don't want to go spend the money. Plant number one and plant number two have to be rehabbed. When those are brought back online, we might be able to have some great dialogue. In the meantime, they are doing the citizen comment, they are doing public engagement. That 40 million is included in that 2 million dollar amount. The tree clearing of Pearl River is my fault too. Reassigning the process of permit approvals to the administration, to admin staff lacking the expertise or knowledge and training to perform the functions, resulting in a mistake that allowed for the clearing of Pearl River. That circle right there is the engineer we've paid over $98,000 for development review. That's MWN Engineering, who received accolades a little bit before. That's the engineer who missed it. It wasn't the admin staff who missed it. A memo from Trey Jobe said, by the way, this was a new development, we'd never done a development that required tree mitigation, and so therefore, it wasn't included in the steps. It was missed. However, the site plan review requires tree mitigation. We have a third-party engineer doing that. He's managing other projects. Ours wasn't that important, until guess what? The trees are gone. This is what we paid MWM during that time period, $98,000 for development review. But it's my fault the trees got cleared. This is the toughie. This is the one that had redacted information that Victoria has allowed me to share. There is an allegation, and the most inflammatory one, about forgery. The allegation is that the assistant city secretary forged a document with the signature of the prior city secretary. Why? Because there was required travel. She was eight months pregnant, having to travel from La Grange to Georgetown. The city policy says it's up to me to decide if she can have a hotel room. City secretary decided she was going to have that authority. So, assistant city secretary has mandated travel to receive her certification. The normal process is that you take the city credit card, the department credit card, and you book your hotel room. At some point in the process, the city secretary said, nope, you can't have a hotel room. Hotel room had already been booked. No request to me as to whether or not she could or couldn't have a hotel. City secretary talks to the assistant city secretary, the assistant city secretary and her husband pay the bill directly. The allegation is that the city secretary was not aware of any disciplinary action that happened. There's her signature. There's also the forged document, I think if somebody was trying to forge a document, you would get the name right. Victoria signed her name. This is an Adobe auto fill that happens when you do a hotel reservation. Further, there's a travel authorization form that the city secretary signed acknowledging that there was no hotel room that was paid. There's the bill. Forgery? I don't think so. But that's what's, that's what's going on in next door. So, thank you, Linda. There's a allegation of $560,000 that the city manager had, was dishonest in her knowledge about a lawsuit. There was a potential duplicate payment. There was a duplicate payment. Our vendor Kimlock was hacked. A staffer received an email that had new wiring instructions. The staffer, who no longer works with us, did not follow protocol and pick up the phone and verify that that was correct. The assertion is that I failed to enjoin, I must have lied because I don't want to enjoin the lawsuit. Newsflash, Kimlock was breached in three cities, Belmead, Aransas Pass, my prior city, and Bastrop. The first thing I did was pick up and call the finance director, Sandra Garcia, in Aransas Pass. She picked up the phone and called Belmead. We then put word out to TML, don't do this, they've been hacked. Kimlock is a big provider of service of large equipment. The allegation is that I failed to enjoin a lawsuit. Here's an email from the city manager of the city of Belmead. Hey, how's it going? I said, hey, I'm emailing you because I have a council member who says I failed to enjoin a lawsuit. Good to hear from you. I'll get back to you. To be fair, city attorney, are you aware of any lawsuit happening yet? No? You know why? Because it's still under federal investigation. That 580 is added in that 2 million. Here's a lovely one. Visit Bastrop. This is my fault. This is my fault. I provoked the issue with the community that ultimately costed taxpayers more than $137,000 in legal fees. So, the auditor's findings, these are the third-party auditor's findings. Third-party, third-party auditor findings. Misuse of, or I won't say misuse, incorrect according to governmental accounting practices. Now, the allegation is that I knew there was $2,500 already accounted for. And by the way, nothing that I'm sharing is not public record. The council voted to release all of these over the summer. $2,500 that was already accounted for is the allegation. How many are you aware of what the expenses were? That's a massage bill on the Visit Bastrop card. I can give you many more. Now, here's an email from councilmember Fosser who says, of the 84,000 potentially of concern, $1,509 should be considered reasonable with further investigation, and $2,400 of that, it's kind of a dead end, but we're gonna consider it reasonable. But, that's only 0.6% of the budget over the last four years. Now, these are reasonable expenses. Hero Sports Bar, August 21st. Private event Corvette Invasion, Connie the Mayor, Terry Moore, Kristy Hun, Lyle Nelson, and other people, but I can't remember who else. Examples of what was questionable with little to no documentation. Guadalajara Restaurant, on 318, we had a party. I didn't get invited, I wasn't working here at the time. The staff into the record says, the prior director of Visit Bastrop dated someone at Guadalajara for a while, went there a lot. She took us there a lot, at like 3:00 or 4:00 PM when we were still on the clock, so that we wouldn't have to make up our time elsewhere. Once we got there, it got awkward, and she would kiss him in front of us, and it would feel messy, all paid for by Visit Bastrop. Now, to be clear, she wasn't kissing the mayor, she was kissing the waiter. Now, the next allegation is that three councilmembers proceeded with criminal charges. Now, I have an obligation. Four employees came to me, and before I met with four employees, I said, if you're going to talk to me, you need to know that I will air it. If you don't want it aired, you don't talk to me. My comment to them many a time is, I'm not going to jail for you or anybody. Now, now, here we go. There was a no bill. True. That doesn't mean those expenses were a good use of public taxpayer dollars. Now, she says, the mayor, she says, the mayor was never under investigation. Well, that's true, because he refused to cooperate. Now, here's the assertion. Here's the timeline. They meet with me in August of '23. That day, because the allegation included the mayor, I called the mayor pro tem. He happened to be having lunch with new councilmember Meyer. They came to my office. I immediately called then Visit Bastrop Chair, Carrie Fosser, who also came to my office. I then called city attorney, who we had on conference call. So, the assertion that I created all of this narrative on my own is more than a fallacy. Counsel ordered the investigation. Now, three attorneys confirmed the accusations to be invalid. Also an incorrect statement. There's an audio here, but we've wasted enough time. It's the audio that the council released of the mayor's interview with Sarah Glasser, the investigator. The mayor asked, why does anybody care? And Sarah says, from my perspective, if a public official is having a romantic relationship with the contractor of the city, and there are allegations that the contractor has engaged in some kind of misconduct related to finance, there is a possibility that the public official could have involvement in that as well. That's why I'm asking. Now, starts getting juicier. I failed to provide an open records request by then city secretary Anne Franklin. Anne Franklin's request was, I'm requesting all documents from Mayor Pro Tem John Kirkland to Mayor Lyle Nelson, councilmember Lee, Meyer, Fosser, Plunkett, Sylvie Carrillo, and city manager and/or Alan Borquez. Newsflash, IT performs the search, I don't, for obvious reasons. The email in question that I didn't produce was an email between private citizen John Kirkland and attorney Alan Borquez. It is not going to be in my possession, and in fact, only came to be in my possession in executive session when attorney Borquez produced it. And it is still under attorney-client privilege. I couldn't have released it. Now, it's also my fault I haven't transitioned from the role as interim BEDC director. She says, I failed to faithfully execute a directive from the city to hire a BEDC director or plan of course of action to relinquish her duties. City manager budgeted $42,000 in stipend for herself. A year later, Carrillo Trevino still serves as the interim director. I scoured the records, I asked the board chair, no directive from the board. Besides, the city council approves all expenditures. The BEDC board approved the budget with that dollar amount, and then council approved it. The prior BEDC director was paid $170,000 plus a $10,000 car allowance. You know how much I'm paid of that salary? Now, as interim BEDC director, I modified and completed an agreement with Accutronic, first federally registered internship program in Bastrop. Completed a MOCO agreement with the clawback provision. We launched the sports complex study. I completed the small business loan in partnership with Rosco Bank. We launched entrepreneurial training focused on underserved populations. I partnered with the Chamber on the Regional Business Summit. I partnered with Smithville Workforce. We increased funding to workforce solutions. TA Adhesive is a new company that will be ribbon cutting, and they will be receiving their certificate of occupancy this month. LNS Electric was a company who came for incentive. I said, no, they still built, they're in their second expansion. I halted the engineering study with water and wastewater with Dusette that had no end in sight. Why? Because of prior staff. I returned that $185,000 that's included in that 2 million. Improved coordination with all city departments, in fact, they will be housed at city hall. We hired a business retention person despite the allegation that I never told anybody that was gonna happen, even though there's board action, and that I missed a resolution to undo a hiring freeze. I introduced sales tax analytics that didn't happen before. Every month I watch the sales taxes, and every month that there's a company that is down, we pay a visit. Why? Because that pays her salary, his salary, and my salary. It's important. Next assertion, I switched a resolution. The swearing-in of Irma Parker. This was addressed with the council in an email. Wasn't enough, it made it into this report. I unilaterally changed language in a resolution to reflect something different than the language, and it wasn't properly posted in the public. The resolution was to confirm the interim city secretary to be the city secretary. Councilmember Lee continues to refer to her as the interim city secretary, as if I have missed a step.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to items for individual consideration of 9A being considered an actual resolution 2024-116 to the interim city secretary and assistant city secretary in the Home Rule Charter, Article III, City Council, Section 3.09, City Secretary. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This question arose from our last meeting where we have an interim city secretary. Our charter calls for confirmation of an official city secretary. But just to keep everything above board, I am bringing forward Irma Parker to serve as the city secretary as required by our Home Rule Charter.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Plunkett, I have a second from councilmember Meyer, just by hair. Any further discussion, questions, rubs to this item? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the rule.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to 9B. Receive a report from the interim city secretary. Correction, is that now the city secretary?
That is now city secretary, yes.
We will strike the word interim from this introduction. Receive a report from the city. Thank you, counsel. Motion.
So, just to be clear, Irma Parker was serving as interim city secretary. According to our city attorney, there is nothing in the charter that requires me to bring an interim for confirmation. But because there had already been discussion and concern, I brought it forward. That's what you saw there today. Next big issue, which is really an issue of Ms. Parker confirming the recall petition, was the wage payment for her was too high. If you paid attention to last council meeting or the one before, the mayor raises the issue to that she was paid too much money. So, persons serving in interim roles, as evidenced by the next slide I'm going to show you, are paid room, board, travel per diem, as well as an hourly wage. Per CM Lee's own document, the city secretary's salary on average is $115,000. Once I add the 30% overhead for TMRS, Health, FICA, all of the other stuff, it's a 149.5. Now, Airbnb's in our area, average about $3,000 a month, if you can get one. Now, the breakout. 149.5 divided by 12, that's 12,458. Housing costs of $3,000 a month, per diem to go home twice a month, total monthly cost, 16,048. She was paid $16,000. I did not pay a per diem rate. Had we outsourced it to a firm like the Borquez firm, I'd have paid an overhead on top of that. I chose not to do that, because again, I'm trying not to get us to go bankrupt. These are the prior interims that have been paid. Per diem, lodging, heck, one of them even got a microwave. Now, her deliverables, fix the TABC billing that hasn't happened in years, fix the municide process flow, fix the annexation compliance report that hadn't been filed in years, which is important because how do you know where you're supposed to vote? And how do you know where you're supposed to tax? Prep for the 2025 election, website development, training for staff on ordinance and resolution development, so I don't have to pay him any more money to do that. We can do it internally. We can do it internally. And continue to draft the City Council agenda and associated documents. Now, she also says I violated my employment agreement by moving outside of the city limits. I send her a text message on March the 1st and said, "What do you think about me potentially moving outside the city limit and putting it in front of you guys? I know it'll have to go for a vote." What the public doesn't understand is the Code of Ordinances says that the council has the ability to negotiate that in my contract. The charter prevails. Unless we were talking about a quorum. In that case, that was different, because that was a conflict too. We pick and choose. Now, council acted on March the 12th. My purchase wasn't completed until late April. The charter provision failed. I know I will have a residency requirement. However, a homestead and a residency requirement are two totally different things. I will maintain my home in the colony. I will pay a rental bill in the City of Baskdrop, and I will become a City of Baskdrop voter. Thank you. Thank you. Now, now.
Please, once again, it's a business meeting.
There's an open records request. There's an open records request that I treated vendors unprofessionally, and it is a bad reflection on the City of Baskdrop. I will treat a vendor badly if they're going to take advantage. This particular vendor had an increase in fees, and in the interview, I said, "What do I turn around and tell the public? What are they getting better?" Nothing. Okay, I'm not going to tell little Miss O'Lady at the settlement that her bill went up $5 because we're going up on the wastewater and water fees as part of our American wastewater study. They did an open records request. Councilmember Lee said she had no documents responsive to the request. Guess what? I have no documents responsive to the request through records of 831. This is an email from said vendor whose boss is telling her, she's a sub-vendor by the way. The contract had a no-contact clause. Why? Because they'll politic the elected officials. "I would like you to reach out to Cheryl Lee sometime when you think the timing is right. How important price was in the bid? How zero-way strategies could pay? It would help our cause to get the good, the bad, the ugly into the mix for the other cities, and of course, we would pay you for your time." Now, that's paying Stacy Savage, that's not paying Councilmember Lee. Now, Ms. Savage proceeded to write a huge open records request that Councilmember Lee grilled me over various emails, to the point that the City Attorney had to intervene. "Mrs. Savage, we cannot send you the exhibits as they are documents at issue. What is at issue is a legal memo." And so, because it's requested, it's got to go to the AG for opinion. At the point of that email, the firm had already billed us $630. Bankrupt. So, I'm almost done. She says, "I have employee morale, and I have employee morale issues. People are afraid to speak up. Resignation's totaling $682,000 since I've been here." She's absolutely right. But that's how our financial policy and our employment policy is stated. When an employee leaves office, they are due all of what we call drag-up pay. All of their unused vacation, and if you have a certain tenure in the city, you're going to get your unused sick also. So, I did offer employees severance packages. I absolutely did. Because I take into account their time and grade and how much service they gave to the city. Sometimes it's a failure to thrive under the manager. I was said manager. You can understand why there was a failure to thrive among the prior employees. I will take that to the bank every single time. So, there was an allegation that we were over-budget because of that. That's not why we were over-budget, because those positions remained vacant. We were over-budget in the City Managers line item because I didn't do a monthly or quarterly transfer. I waited till the end of the year. Andres and Viviana were moved into my org. I didn't transfer their salaries until the end of the year, which made an appearance of being over-budget. Now, why am I really pissed off about this memo? It's not me, I have 27 years of public service. City managers have what's called a parachute. If we get terminated with cause, depending on the negotiation, I leave here with six months plus salary. City Manager Nodessa just resigned, he got paid $700,000. There's a temporary restraining order to keep that from happening, but that is the common story. So, if this council were to choose to get a little crazy, I have the opportunity to resign. And I have a job offer tomorrow, it's called working for myself. I have a company on ice. I have a company on ice. My husband's waiting for that to happen. We bought in Baskdrop because I planned to be in Baskdrop. Now, the assertion is I've promoted employees without adequate experience or technical knowledge, and it has placed undue pressure on both the employees and their teams, leading to preventable mistakes and negative perception of the quality of service provided. The employees that are mentioned in this memo will seek employment somewhere else at some point in the future. When a recruiter Googles them, when a recruiter Googles Viviana when she's applying for an Assistant City Manager job, or Andres when he's applying for a City Manager job, or Vicky when she's applying for a City Manager job, or Victoria when she's going to become a City Secretary, they're going to get a memo that says they're unqualified to do their job. That's what's going to be found in the Google search. So yes, it is a bit upsetting to me. But, but, I have an army of employees over there who will tell you, "It isn't morale because of me, it's morale because of this." Now, now, the employees that were promoted that were deemed not qualified in the report, Tim Vandervoort, 26-plus years of municipal experience. Doug Hagerty, 12-plus years of municipal experience. Viviana, 14-plus years of experience. Alicia Perkins, 6-plus years of experience. Jimmy Campbell, 10-plus years of experience. James Doc Cowley, 42-plus years of experience. Kathy Danielson, 28-plus years of experience. Laura Allen, 25-plus years of experience. Jaime Saldivar, 8-plus years of experience. Andres Rosales, 17-plus years of experience. John Edleton, 41-plus years of experience. And Curtis Hancock, who in that wastewater plant walkthrough is mentioned as being unqualified, he and Andres being unqualified during that walkthrough. And that Mr. Pedales didn't say anything, so why are we paying him? Curtis Hancock, 18-plus years of experience. You can understand why I wanted this memo public. It could have simply been handled a little bit different. But when I see a resolution that's already drafted, that is not the standard of how we handle executive session, I knew something was cooking. And it didn't take me long to do my homework. And I asked that question. I asked that question to the council. It is unusual to have a resolution already prepared. Alan, pretty unusual for us during executive session? Pretty unusual. I love Baskdrop. I love what I do as a City Manager. I wouldn't do any other thing in the world other than go work on the private side, where I'll make three times the money. But I am a public servant at heart. What you guys don't know about me is that my father was an illegal immigrant until 88 here. I remember going to the utility business office ashamed because I couldn't pay a bill. I remember getting a stop-work order because he was trying to add an addition to our little rental. So I know what it's like to be treated ugly. And I didn't want that for our residents, and we don't do that for our residents. And that's why those employee turnovers were what they were. So, after this PowerPoint, if you want to launch an investigation, I think that's fair. But I also think we should launch an ethics investigation.
Okay, Council. City Manager's laid out her position and provided opinions. Do you have any questions, comments for the City Manager?
Provided facts, Mayor.
The City Manager's laid out her position. Does anybody have any questions for her?
I do.
I have, yes, I had my light on.
Please.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I do have a question, not for our City Manager by presenting these facts, but I do have a question on ramifications and consequences. So this will be to our City Attorney. Because there are unsubstantiated allegations, as you've seen. What are the ramifications? What are the most severe consequences that a council member could suffer? I assume parties named could maybe libel, slander. So we could take a legal action that way. Could another City Council member present a legal case against another City Council? I don't know these answers, but my question, Alan, is what are the most severe ramifications for defamation allegations from a City Council member?
Councilmember Meyer, Mayor, Council, I'm going to say generally, it's not clear to me what legal ramifications there are for tonight's conversation. The employee at issue exercised her right to discuss this in public, and that was respected. The council engaged in it. It's not clear to me that there are legal consequences to individuals or the City of Baskdrop in this instance. If you want to get into details, then my request is that that's an executive session conversation, because I don't think ethically I could do my duty to the city and talk about particulars in the open.
Thank you, Alan. So, that being considered, and the problem that we're having, and I do want to apologize to you for what you have to put up with, because this is not what we're supposed to be doing. But I would propose that this issue be added to an agenda item in the next City Council meeting to discuss standards of conduct for City Council members and the potential impact of defamatory statements on city employees and operations.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments?
So, yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Of course, I have a comment. So thank you for the pretty picture, City Manager. I do nothing without doing investigation. I think a lot of people that know me know that. I have spent months compiling data that I have gotten pushback on to try to receive, to try to get this information, so that I could understand what was going on. I wasn't going to just take what somebody said without doing my own investigation. This memo that I presented to council was done so in a manner that would protect the employees. I did not want to publicly name employees. I conferred with the City Attorney probably two weeks before the memo was released, and I know that the City Manager just painted this pretty picture for y'all of what she's done and what she's done. But I encourage you guys to read the memo. What has been stated in the memo is stuff that I found out, I would say 90%, just through research on my own and documentation. There, and I have gotten reached out to by former staff members, third-party information, engineers have reached out to me. I've only spoken with one, but several engineers have reached out to me regarding how they're treated by the City Manager. I would not make something up just to make the City Manager look bad. If I didn't think that there was something there, I wouldn't have brought it. I wouldn't have, I didn't want everybody to go through all of this. I really wanted to handle it as a council body, and we don't know if there's any defamation. Why? Because we haven't done a formal investigation. My memo was to point out things that I found concerning regarding her spending of the city's money. And a formal investigation could have proven that. But she's now presented you guys with this pretty picture to make me look like everything that I put in this memo was incorrect. I'm going to urge you guys, read it for yourself. Compared to what she put up there, there's so much information that she didn't put on the screen that's in the memo that you're not going to look at because she's painted this pretty picture for you. Read it for yourself, and I'm asking that we use a third-party...
Please, show a little respect, please.
This whole process is disrespectful. This is ridiculous. She sat up there for, what, an hour and laid by every single line by line by line, and you're going to tell us to do our own research? You ought to be ashamed of yourself. Keep going. And let somebody who actually has my best interests like that woman, man, you run, I'm going to run your campaign. I got a big map.
That's, that's, excuse, excuse, let's have a little decorum in here, sir. All right, please. Absolutely, and that's what I said earlier. So thank you.
Guys, read the memo. There's a lot of information that is not included in those slides in the memo. If you...
Please.
Mayor, may I make a comment, please?
No, I'm not speaking.
Well, how long are we going to allow Councilmember Lee to speak? Because we do have time restraints.
I'm going to give her a few more minutes, because we had a very loud...
And we have people that are waiting, so thank you so much.
We have a very loud interruption.
Let's wrap this up. Oh, yes, we do still have citizen comments.
We still have citizen comments, y'all will be able to speak.
There wasn't, there was not going to be a vote. The question was to listen to a formal investigation so that I wasn't making things up, so that a third party could read my memo, read her response, and then make a decision. But we're so torn, the city is so divisive, I don't trust myself with making a decision. I offered to counsel to do it. So I'm assuming then the claps are for an independent investigation, because you don't know what you don't know.
So, there is action, there is action out of this executive session.
Then we, I was going to point that out. There is consideration in acts.
Just one comment, one quick comment.
Councilmember Meyer.
I promise it, this is going to be real short. I just want to make sure that we understand this investigation, even though Councilmember Lee may try to act as a lawyer, she is not an attorney or investigator, so let's just keep that in mind.
We still have public comments, or the, as with any other member of council, if there's comments that y'all want to make, I'm certainly not going to interrupt y'all. So let's bear that in mind. If there's no further comment in place, Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland.
Thank you. So I'm going to read from the memo, page 42. So, the memo makes specific recommendations, and it, yeah, you know, it doesn't seem like it calls for an investigation. It says, "It is the belief of Councilmember Lee that the infractions stated in this memo warrant termination with cause. If the majority of council, however, does not see immediate termination as the initial option and desires to continue employment with the City Manager, the council should take steps to address the issues stated in this memo and take immediate action to include but not limit to the following: a four-week suspension from both her City Manager role and interim BEDC Director role to allow the council to investigate each matter." There you go. "Restriction of access to City Hall during the internal investigation and confiscation of all city-owned devices to protect city records. Restriction of access to city employees either in person or electronically for the duration of the investigation except when necessary. Communication with the City Attorney or Mayor for official duties to safeguard employees and prevent any risk of influence over the investigative process. A verbal and written reprimand, reduction in salary to original contracted amount, and she should be placed on a 90-day performance improvement plan with specific directives and performance indicators and termination." So I just wanted to say that there was something in mind when this was written. So I just wanted to say that there was something in mind when this was written.
Thank you, sir. I will remind everybody that after our public comment period, I will be calling for a motion and a vote. If there's no further comment, and I see none indicated, we'll begin the citizen comment period. First person scheduled that wishes to speak on this item is Jordan Scott.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jordan Scott. I live at 110 Bowstring Bend here in Bastrop, Texas. Listen, guys, well, outside looking in, it's really easy to say that the people that are serving your community are competent or not competent without actually knowing the full story. That's the reason why I joined and got involved with the city and got appointed to a position on planning and zoning. Since I've been serving on planning and zoning, the complete opposite is true of lack of competence in our, in our city government. Sylvia has worked with us on many projects, many different items, and I have the utmost respect for her. Not only has she been clear and concise in what she wants done and what she needs done, but she does truly have Bastrop's interests in mind. You could tell that with her passion. You could tell that with her commitment and the time that she puts towards all of us as a community. In a time where things do feel completely divided, I think Bastrop is not divided on one thing, and that's that Sylvia is in the position that we want her in and that we do not want her to leave.
Next person scheduled to speak is Deborah Jones. Name and address in three minutes, ma'am.
My name is Deborah Jones. I live at 1606 Pecan Street. And I've had the unique honor of serving with, for, around, about, in this city for over 42 years. I've been on council and committees, boards, et cetera. And I'm gonna just call out one item, and that's the Mayfest Rodeo Arena. I worked on that for 28 years just to get maintenance done. I didn't fight with anybody. I didn't post on frickin' Nextdoor. I didn't go on Facebook. I wasn't rude. I didn't have any fights with anybody. I spent 28 years. We finally got a city manager with enough competence and ability and skill to put together maintenance. I'm not talking about building something. I'm talking about maintenance. I got my 26-plus, 2,600 signatures. I followed the process. I got a budget. After we got the budget, we had city employees throw wrenches into the system, tried to take the money, tried to stall improvements. After a year not getting stuff done, I called the city manager, and guess what? I knew who stopped us. I know why they stopped us. I know how they stopped us. No names, no fighting. We fixed it. So, I just, you know, I could just go on and on with stories. I'm also a developer. My development project, years and years of permitting, millions, I lost over a million dollars. I'm just an appraiser. I'm not a millionaire, but Sylvia gave us a path. Has it been easy? No. Has it been expensive? Yes. She gave us a path. And, and I just, this is embarrassing. This council, I'm sorry. This is embarrassing. And, you know, there's one thing. We had to deal with all this, and a lot of the same people that created havoc in the city when I was on council, the same people are doing this now. And we had a mayor, Connie Schrader, that came in and snapped it together. We had great leadership under her. She put this together and ended it. And now, you guys, I don't know, maybe it's a leadership problem. I don't know. But now it's all starting up again, just a bunch of wild Indians, just ugly, ugly, mean, ugly people. If you cannot figure out how to get involved and make solutions, I spent 28 years to get maintenance. I wasn't ugly. I wasn't mean. You need to figure out how to get involved, participate, and get things done without attacking and being ugly to people.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person scheduled to speak on this item is Judith Hoover. Ms. Hoover, name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Alrighty. Judith Hoover, 1316 Wilson Street. What I want to say tonight is, I've lived here for 38 years now. My husband and I picked a Bastrop. We're still glad we picked it. We've been through a lot of fights. We've developed for 38 years, so of course, we did have some uphill battles. But, the city of Bastrop right now is in the best position with the best leadership from the staff, the city manager, the council, the various boards, everybody in this auditorium tonight. Isn't that wonderful? People care. People want to do what's right. They want the best for our community. You know, Tommy and I were shut down on a project right across the street from where we live. The former, well, a former city manager instructed a staff person to white out our building permit. It took us three years to prove that that permit was whited out. The city of Bastrop came to us and asked if we would settle the score. They paid us to go away, to not end up in trouble-damaged court. We love this community. We certainly weren't paid what it was worth, but we were paid enough and given our permit back so that we could complete that house. A psychiatrist now lives in that house. This community needs more mental health workers. That should be obvious from tonight. So, I'm grateful that we have progressed, that we have the most competent city manager, the best staff I've ever dealt with. When I, when I call, when I call the city of Bastrop now, or I go there, it's what can we do to make it happen? How can we help you? We've never had that attitude, and that attitude starts at the top. Our city manager does not require employees to white out building permits. Thank you.
Next person scheduled to speak on this agenda item is Kay Rogers. Name and address, and you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Kay Rogers, I have an office at 1010 Chesonet Street in Bastrop. The last time I lived in Bastrop, I lived at 1502 Wilson Street in the Crocheron House in 1980. But I have practiced law here since 1978, and I've dealt with a lot of city councils and a lot of city managers. And honestly, we've never had a city manager like this one. And I'm not a friend of hers. I've met her professionally. I sit on a little board that's ancillary to the parks board. She's very responsive. She meets with us. She answers your phone call. I've dealt with her on behalf of some clients who had interests with the city. She's, she's neutral. She's a whirling dervish. She is steeped in all things Bastrop. I don't know if you've ever been in her office, but the walls are covered with all these projects, all the subdivisions, all the projects, the water projects, the numbers. And she knows it all, and she's, she's just a master of what's going on here. You would be crazy to run her off. We are so lucky to have this. And with everything else that's going on in Bastrop, she's, she's a good face for the city. She's a good ambassador for this city. So I would say, let's keep her.
Thank you. Next person scheduled to speak on this agenda item is Johnny Sanders. Mr. Sanders, name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, mayor. Staff, glad you are here, in the back. Just give them a hand, staff. My name's Johnny Sanders. I'm a lifelong resident. Don't live in sea limits, own property on 1607 Pecan, where I grew up. I live at 156 Spring Branch, right next to the wastewater plant, which I have no problem with, yeah. So what I want to talk about tonight is just basic 101 council. I've been, I've been there, done that. Y'all know what I've done. I don't want to talk about me. I want to talk about basic 101 council people. Be responsible. This deal tonight took up way too much time. You didn't have a resolution from three council people. You had a resolution because of the witch hunt, from two people. Two people that wanted to take her down. Now, I'm just asking you, you've got a city manager that's reached out in the school district. She's well-respected in the community. Why y'all can call a meeting tonight with a resolution that doesn't even exist? Because you want to investigate her? You're not an attorney. And if you're gonna stay neutral on this, any council people want to stay neutral, then that, that car needs to be pushed out of the way. Because this lady is driving the show. And I'm gonna tell y'all another thing. What did I do? Good? If you run this lady off, and I'm looking at Bernie's laughing at me because I don't know what I'm talking about. If you run this lady off, you're making a huge mistake. She's on the right path. Everybody in here knows it. This is a bullshit meeting, taking up way too much bullshit time. So it's just time to call bullshit. It's bullshit.
Thank you, sir. Next person scheduled to speak is Doc Jackson. Name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. I am Doc Jackson, and I live at 163 Tahitian Drive here in Bastrop. I'm a former council member for almost 30 years, and I am proud to be a fifth-generation Bastropian. But we're not here to talk about Doc Jackson. I'm here to talk about and have accolades for our city manager. Sylvia Correia has been a godsend to Bastrop. We were having so many issues, and I witnessed personally a lot of these issues, having been in, on the city council and working with the city for many years. But I'm still a very proud Bastropian. But, you know, this has got to stop. This is something that is just detrimental to us as a community. We're getting coverage that we don't need to have over different issues that are occurring that shouldn't be happening. We should be trying to promote positively this city. That's something that I've always believed in, and I continue to try to promote Bastrop because it is the city that I was born and raised in and will continue to live in, regardless of what happens. But I'm still wanting to make a difference. And so, I would say that keeping Sylvia Correia on as city manager is a must-have. And so many people have spoken tonight that I don't think I need to say much more, so I won't say much more. All I'll say is to the council members that are here tonight, do the right thing, and go ahead and vote, have a vote of confidence for this city manager who has done nothing but the right thing and doesn't deserve to have this type of treatment. And I would applaud you for doing that. So, cut to the chase. Do a vote of confidence, and keep her in office as the city manager of Bastrop. And that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person scheduled to speak is Ken Kestlis. You know the drill, Mr. Kestlis. Name, address, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Ken Kestlis, 1301 Church Street. I could probably just say ditto, but there's a few of us still alive who know the importance of the relationship between mayor and city manager. I've known almost all of the city managers that we've had, worked with more than half of them in one capacity or another. There's no question at all that what you've heard tonight is true. Sylvia is the best that we've ever had. She, it's a godsend that she's come to us at the time that she has come, because this is the biggest, challenging, stressful, transitional time that we're ever gonna have in this community. And council members, I appreciate your service for us, but it goes beyond just this resolution tonight. It is a question of what can you do to help us keep Sylvia here until she is retired from being city manager? And I don't know what that's gonna take, but that is job number one for you. And it's a job number one for all of us in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person scheduled to speak is Joe Grady Tuck. Mr. Tuck, name, address, and three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, council members and attendees. My name is Joe Grady Tuck. I live at 1503 Wilson Street. Like a friend, Cynthia Myers, I'm a seventh-generation resident. I've known her since she was a little girl. I think, I think I've got red clay in my DNA. And I'm, I practice law here, and we have, I'm proud to have the biggest law firm in the county. And the, earlier, somebody said, well, what qualifications does Ms. Lee have? She's not a lawyer or an investigator. Well, I am a lawyer. I served six counties as the elected district attorney for many years. And I can tell you, I echo my, I've listened to everything that's been said, and I can, I can tell you that I share the legal opinion of my friend Johnny Sanders, that this whole thing is bullshit. So, that's my legal opinion.
Next person scheduled to speak on this agenda item is Rebecca Schaefer. Name, address, and you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
My name is Rebecca Schaefer. I live at 1008 Pine Street. I think that this foray is just crazy. It seems that recent misconduct by Mr. Nelson has sparked this investigation. And in an attempt to redirect the negative attention that is a result of his own documented misconduct. This move by Cheryl Lee and Lyle Nelson appears to be an act of retaliation for matters that maybe didn't go their way. It reminds me of a campaign, a campaign by a group of bullies. You should be ashamed for wasting our time.
Next person scheduled to speak on this agenda item is Chris Kirby.
Good evening. Chris Kirby, 33 Los Pines Avenue. I would certainly echo the statements that have been made about this being an embarrassment. But none of this stuff happens alone. I don't believe that Councilmember Lee, all by herself, decided, "Hey, I want to take this on." It happens in a culture of chronic complainers, which this town has got way too many of. And we see it at so many of these council meetings when folks line up to tout the beauty of the B-3 code or whatever the case may be, which was an absolute nightmare for this city. And we're slowly but surely taking it apart. I also want to just point out that elections have consequences because these are elected officials. And keep that in mind when the time comes in May because I think that the voices should be heard at that point as well. I just also want to say that, you know, if this was the best they got, because Councilmember Lee said that there were a lot more allegations. But you'd think that the best would be put into the memo. And if the best that's put into the memo is what we saw this evening, then it truly was an embarrassment. I also just wanted to point out that Councilmember Bohrke has mentioned that he had written the agenda item based upon a conversation with Mayor Nelson and with Councilmember Lee. I wonder what conversation was had with the other members of the city council before he did his job to represent all of this city council rather than a single member and the mayor. And then to take the wording of that allegation that was put into the agenda and to not at least run that by the other members of the council prior to putting it out there for public consumption, I think is suspect at best. We, as a city, need to be unified. There's no question about that. But unity comes with drowning out the voices that are constantly squeaking that are standing in the way of this city. And again, you know, I'm sure that, you know, we'll have lovely statements about Chris Kirby on Next Door or whatever the case may be is. And all I can say is, you know, bring them on. I mean, I've been in this game for 35 years as a practicing attorney. And I've welcomed a lot more folks that are a lot better than you. You're going to raise hell about whatever it is I have to say. But, you know, it's time for us as a city to not only say that things like this are not okay, but to say that all the stuff of this genre is not okay. This city is moving. There's no way for it to stop. This city is a fantastic place led by an incredible city manager. I don't need to, I will join in all of the accolades and by a great city council, okay? But it needs to be better. And it can be better. And we can make it better through our voices in every city council meeting, through our voices in every election. It is time for us to get people who understand the direction this city is moving, sign on to that direction. And if you don't like it, that's okay. Texas is a huge place. Okay? And I would more than welcome you to go somewhere else where the chronic complainers are in the majority. They're not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person scheduled to speak is Sheila Lowe. Mrs. Lowe, name, address, and three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Sheila Lowe. I reside at 2015 Prickly Pear, Bastrop, Texas. I strongly believe that the time and energy of Bastrop's elected officials should be focused on meeting the needs of our residents and improving our community. I'm opposed to the proposed investigation against the city manager. It seems to stem from personal grievances rather than issues that truly serve the public. I say this because on November 12th, after an almost two-hour deliberation on the evaluation of the city manager in closed session, the council returned to open session and delivered a unanimous vote to accept the evaluation of the city manager. Because they all voted together to accept the evaluation, it would lead one to believe that she was performing at least minimum expectations. So why now? A week later, are we, as city residents in a city, at halt? I feel it's because of individual council members were not able to get what they wanted in the process and want to continue what we have seen week after week for the past year or more of a council member at odds with our city manager. As a member of this community, I urge our city leadership to prioritize progress, transparency, and the well-being of our Bastrop citizens. Our elected officials should be prioritizing these needs of our residents and not engaging in personal conflicts. And we should be focusing on moving forward together. And on the note of unqualified employees, I have personal knowledge of Councilmember Lee giving a reference of employment for one of those individuals that were named on the list. Thank you for your time.
Next person scheduled to speak is Melinda Larson. Name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Oh, let me get to the microphone.
You bet.
You just slow down with me. I can't keep up. Good evening, council. And I had a whole book of stuff to say. And everybody said it. But I do have, but there's a couple of things that I will do that I'm kind of excited about. The first one is when Linda Curtis got up here and said, "Oh, I didn't say anything out of line. I didn't do anything wrong." I just so happened to write all the statements on social media that she cyberbullied Sylvia. Anyone that even said, "I love Sylvia," it was her going after. Carolyn Smith, is she here tonight? The little granny that's so nasty? So I'm going to re-
Ms. Larson, let me-
Lyle?
Ms. Larson.
No, you listen.
Ms. Larson.
I have three minutes.
I understand.
Do you need to resign and stop it?
I'm going to give you-
You're a joke. Nobody's listening.
I'm going to give you your three minutes, but I'm just asking you not to attack other members of the community. Please.
Oh, I'm not going to follow that rule because you've done it. Linda Curtis has done it. Cheryl Lee has done it. Carrie Foster's done it.
That's my admonition to you. That's my admonition to you.
I'm not listening to you. I don't even call you mayor.
I understand, but I'm the presiding officer.
Now I'm mad. Okay, so just a few things Linda Curtis has said since nobody addressed that on social media. And she also had this cyberbullying cult. "They went after me. You don't vote here. Bought a house here for 47 years or paid taxes." Okay, here's a few. "We have written about city manager Silver Correio's role in a wasteful and viciously false recall petition directed at Mayor Lyle Nelson. The city, thanks to Correio, is now spending more money on lawyers to try to save the fatally flawed recall petition." There's a common denominator in these statements, and it's you, Mr. Nelson. So let me ask you a question. Why didn't you put a stop to this? Are you proud that people said this kind of stuff about your mayor? Why didn't you stop it? You know why? Because Jimmy Crouch said it right when he said, "You never take responsibility for what you do, and you don't. And Cheryl Lee, neither do you." And Carrie Foster, sitting over there all quiet, like, "Ooh, I'm not doing anything." That Bastrop thing you pulled was horrible. Horrible. And I know how deep you're in it. And Pablo Sernas, who came up here for, okay, Ever &amp; Ever, talking about the B-3-
Again, again, we're going to disparage other members of the community.
I can say this.
No, it's, please, I'm asking you not to.
Say what? Pablo, that Pablo Sernas called for Sylvia's firing at a public planning and zoning meeting? Or the town hall meeting? When she was going around with a microphone, asking? I can't say that. But Cheryl Lee can say all the crap she said. Oh, here's some good ones. And then I'll be through. And I have one last thing to say. A private meetings with the city council, three members, because there's two good ones, that were engaged in their own vote rigging. Oh, private meeting accusations on that little proposition that Linda Curtis stood out in front of the annex for a week, trying to get that thing passed, Carrie. Are you proud of yourself? You are? Are y'all proud of Carrie Foster, our city council member? Okay, last thing I'm going to say.
Way up.
Last thing I'm going to say is, Lyle, Cheryl, Carrie, Pablo, you got your ass kicked tonight. And to Sylvia, I'm so sorry that this happened to you in our town.
Thank you for your comments.
And I love you.
Your three minutes are up. Next person scheduled to speak is Jimmy Crouch. Name and address. You'll have three minutes.
I had a 202 minute, 59 second speech here to write in support of the city manager. And really, I can't top everything that's been said tonight in support of Sylvia, Ms. Correio, the city manager. I can say that, oh, and I didn't say my name, Jimmy Crouch, 605 Buttonwood Street. The best thing that we did on council while I was on council was to hire Sylvia Correio. And that's, that's one of the things I've said since I've been off is that's the best thing that's happened to this city. There's, and there's just a couple of things I wanted to mention that, positive things that she has done that haven't been said yet. One was the Old Iron Bridge getting it redone. She's pushed that through and is getting that done for the city. Deborah Jones mentioned the rodeo arena. That was going to turn into soccer fields if it wasn't for a group of rodeo lovers in town. And thank goodness that they stepped up and got that taken care of. And let's see, my last pair, oh, and in the Bastrop Independent School District, Bastrop County and the city of Bastrop had their first-ever joint meeting to discuss development. And what an awesome feeling that was to have those three entities all looking at the same map at the same time. And I hope that continues in the future. Last thing. If an investigation is needed to prove how hard our city manager works every day, then please have one. I think that you will find that all of our actions are fair and open and have the very best intent for the city of Bastrop. We are very lucky to have a city manager that has this much respect for our city and always puts our citizens first. And one more item. The employees of the city of Bastrop here understand who they work for. They work for the citizens here. And not all of them used to do that. But they all do that now. And God help Bastrop. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person scheduled to, or does not wish to speak is Cheryl Long. She's in opposition to this item. Next person scheduled to, or has sent in a citizen comment, does not wish to speak, is in opposition of 4A. Next person scheduled to speak is Linda Curtis.
I'm Linda Curtis. I live just outside the Sea Limits on South Shore Road. Why do you want my address, Sylvia? 150 South Shore Road. It's on the card. So I really actually appreciated Jimmy's, what he just said. Why? Because he came up here and said plainly, "Thank you for doing these things." That, to me, was very excellent testimony. And it was from the heart. And I really appreciate it. I am very ashamed of the people who came up here and said BS. I won't say the full, you know what? I'll say it outside the room. Anytime I can curse with the best. That came up here and said, "This was BS," which either tells me that they did get this report and the rest of us poor schlobs didn't get it, or they have absolutely no intention of reading this report. I can't wait to read it. And here, just shut up for a minute and let me speak. You want to come on up here? Then sign up.
Excuse me, just a moment. We've given everybody the opportunity to speak. So I would appreciate it if y'all would give either of opposing views the opportunity to speak for their three minutes.
Yeah, the people who want to get all bent out of shape, that I go online and speak what I think needs to be done, what my organization believes and puts it out there, you don't support freedom of speech. Somebody just got elected president on that issue. And you probably voted for him. I'm assuming you did. So shut up. So shut up and let me speak. You want to speak, you come up here yourself. I don't like bullies. And I saw a lot of bullies here tonight. And it makes me sick to my stomach because I know where this is coming from. Be quiet and let me- I am truly ashamed that you didn't thank Cheryl Lee for all the work she did to come as a member of this city council and try to discuss with you and with this community what she thought and still thinks is a problem. Now, all you people who came here to clap and jeer and yell and scream and curse and act a fool, it's up to you now to read the report and make your decision. And that's exactly what I'm going to do. I don't like bullies. I love you, Cheryl Lee. Thank you for standing up. And anything I can do to help you or any member of the council, whether it's John Kirkland or Lyle Nelson, if you want to stand up and be counted and be a council member that tells your employee how to treat council members, the ones that are not in the majority, they deserve the most respect. I'll be in your corner, John Kirkland or anybody else on this dais. By the way, if you really want to know what we're saying, go to livtx.org and go. Shut up. Shut up. And go to the news section. Go get, go get our phone number. Call me. Talk to me. If you don't like doing it online, I'm here to talk to you anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, time is up. Thank you. Next person who does not wish to speak wants to voice their opposition to 4A is Steve Durman. We have Ishmael Harris, does not wish to speak, wants to record his opposition to this item. The next person does not wish to speak, Barbara Coy, does not wish to speak, opposes 4A. Next person scheduled to speak is Cecilia Serna and does wish to speak. Name, address. You'll have three minutes.
Cecilia Serna, 1104 Hill Street. Now, if y'all have an agenda, I'd like to read what it says. And all of y'all that are jeering, please pay attention to this part. "It is not the attention of the city of Bastrop to provide a public forum for the embarrassment or demeaning of any individual or group." Diminishing of an individual or group. "Accordingly, profane, insulting, or threatening language" Accordingly, profane, insulting, or threatening language directed toward the council and/or any person in the council's present will not be tolerated. I see a bunch of bullies and people acting like kids. For God's sakes, please, let's have a modicum of decorum here. And for those of y'all, I believe, just like with kids, you need to hear both sides of the story. There should be, excuse me, there's ask and answered. No, it's very simple. If you're afraid of hearing the truth, we should hear both sides clearly. If somebody is wrong, well, then what are you afraid of? Give them enough rope.
And told us very clearly, it's the problem. And there's no, there's a report that's fine, right?
And you lose credibility when you behave that way. For God's sakes, we are not children, so stop acting like children. Talking about bullying? What do you think is happening here? All y'all shouting, demeaning people, you are behaving as a bully and should be ashamed of yourself. Again, we need to have some modicum of decorum here. Ask and answer, very simple. Let the truth come out, what are you afraid of? If it, the truth's gonna come out, ask and answer, very simple, both sides of the story. Thank you.
Thank you. There's some cries out to call for the vote. I would love to call for the vote, but the citizens have signed up to speak, and I'm going to run through them until somebody tells me they would like to remove their request. Next person scheduled on this agenda item is Brittany Rogers, does not wish to speak, but records opposition to this. Next individual has not wished to speak, Lindsay Cana opposes the agenda item. William Holford does not wish to speak, opposes the agenda item. I have an unnamed person here. Frank Randzak does not wish to speak, opposes the agenda item. Molly McClure does not wish to speak, opposes the agenda item. Sean Cana does not wish to speak, opposes the agenda item. Jackie Gabrischak does not wish to speak, wants her opposition recorded. Kelsey Owen does not wish to speak, recording her opposition to the agenda item. Becky Wamboldt does not wish to speak, record her opposition to the agenda item. Jamie Haney does not wish to speak, record her opposition to the agenda item. Bernie Jackson does not wish to speak, wants to record her opposition to the agenda item. Sean Sinner does not wish to speak, record opposition to the agenda item. Lauren Anderson does not wish to speak, record opposition to the agenda item. Billy Moore does not wish to speak, record opposition to the agenda item. Sean Sinner does not wish to speak, record opposition to 4A. Denise McNeil does not wish to speak, record opposition to the agenda item. Larry Haney does not wish to speak, record opposition to the agenda item. Rick Wamboldt does not wish to speak, record opposition. Francis Moreno does not wish to speak, wants to record opposition to the agenda item. No name. Crystal Grimes does not wish to speak, wants to record opposition to the agenda item. Tom Scott does not wish to speak, wants his opposition recorded. Jamie Howard does not wish to speak, wants to record opposition. Valerie Lancaster does not wish to speak, record opposition. Nancy Scott does not wish to speak, record opposition to the agenda item. Tina Longoria does not wish to speak, record opposition. Stephanie Lee, or Stephen Lee, I apologize, does not wish to speak, record opposition. Peter Grabaschak does not wish to speak, record opposition. Ashley Musnick does not wish to speak, record opposition. Tammy Dickey does not wish to speak, record opposition. Barbara Caldwell does not wish to speak, wants to register opposition to 4A. Rex Drake does not wish to speak, record opposition. Jimmy Crouch, who has already spoken. Diana Greenwood does not wish to speak, record opposition to this item. Michael Owen does not wish to speak, record opposition. Stephen Coon does not wish to speak, record opposition. George Martinez does not wish to speak, record opposition. Rebecca Privet does not wish to speak, record opposition. Susan Long, I believe, has already spoken. Larry Young does not wish to speak, record opposition. Carmela Otero does not wish to speak, record opposition. Kathy Martinez does not wish to speak, record opposition. Mike Turner does not wish to speak, record opposition. Stephanie Jenkins does not wish to speak, record opposition. Ray Long does not wish to speak, record opposition. Evan Moylan does not wish to speak, record opposition. Catherine Albers does not wish to speak, record opposition. Edwin Travis does not wish to speak, record opposition. Matthew Mix does not wish to speak, record opposition. Lee Raspberry does not wish to speak, record opposition. Jennifer Marshall, opposition. Jesse Shoemaker, opposition. Barry Edwards, opposition. Amanda Hurst, opposition. Mary Freeman, support for Agenda 4A. Carol Standorf, opposition. Charity Alexander, opposition. Becky Nadef, opposition. Clyde Clardy, opposition. Rebecca Christensen, opposition. Brenda Fowler, opposition. Robert Stubeen, opposition. Bailey Grisb, opposition. Doug Conkel, opposition. Michael Prokop, support for Agenda Item 4A. Rebecca Price, opposition. Mel Cooper, opposition. Sarah Rutherford, opposition. Chrissy Lee, opposition. Jane Ramsey McCouch, opposition. And I have one last one here, Lily Piper wishes to speak. Name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, sure will. First of all, I'm Lily Piper, 2110 Pecan Street in Bastrop, Texas. Sylvia did a great job, I mean, she helped me out a whole lot with my property there that I had, she's done a wonderful job for Bastrop. And I just wanna say that, you know, people, they make up stories and all that stuff, and they lie and everything, you know? And it's, how can they sleep with themselves? I can't understand it. Cheryl, you, for instance, you know? No, I'm serious, though. You know, you went to court, and whatever, you wrote a paper, a statement on my son, and my son got probation and stuff like that, you know, and you didn't give, you didn't give your name, you gave a different false name. So, I mean, how could you even live with yourself like that? I can't understand that. I know you know what I'm talking about.
We're not, we're not here to attack things, 'cause in your comments-
Well, I'm not trying to, I'm just being honest, you know? She's an honest person, you know, she's doing real good for the city and everything, you know, a great person, you know, you help people, you know? But just, somebody just lie, I don't like lying. My daddy was a cop here, my daddy, I always talked, we grew up, he would never lie, 'cause when you lie, you steal and cheat, you know? I don't like that. So, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Counsel, this item has been laid out, we've had, we've taken citizen comments. Any further comments from counsel? Councilmember Fossler.
Mayor. Could I ask your question, I think, Mayor? Could I ask your question, I think?
Sure, go ahead.
When you get ready to call the vote, a vote against the resolution, can the council consider, if the city manager inquired any expenses or high returns for herself on this, if the city council, if it were personal?
Councilmember Fossler.
Thanks for coming tonight. As y'all can, as everybody has felt, this has been brewing for a long time, so to get just everything out in the open and to have a conversation has been good, to hear what all has been brewing. And I just can't, I just kept thinking this whole time, it's like, man, relationships, relationships, like, the only thing that works to promote understanding and compassion is when you're in relationship with each other, when you have context, and when you're, when you're invested in a relationship, you're responsible. And I, I just hope we can all be in relationship with each other and not have these escalations that can be handled with conversations. That's what I hope for our council going forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from counsel? Councilmember Lee?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I, I stand by what I wrote in my memo. If you, if the public and the city manager wants to spin it and make it something that it wasn't, I, as a council member, have an obligation, when I see that something's not right, to do an investigation of what I find. I did an investigation of what I found. The city manager can, she was able to give y'all her whole side of the story before y'all even knew my side of the story, or what I found in the investigation. I do still encourage each of you to read the memo in its entirety. I stand by 1,000% everything I wrote in this memo. Are some facts off, maybe, or some dates off, maybe? I can admit to that, but I can guarantee you, 95% of this document was stuff that I found through a simple records request, and no time did I want, and I made it very clear to counsel during our executive session, and no time was this aimed at employees or trying to get employees in trouble. I wanted to keep employees out of it as much as I possibly could. I expressed that to counsel, and I expressed that to the city attorney. This was about documented information that I found, that the city manager was flat-out not truthful about. Choose to believe what you want, but I'm not going to, I'm not gonna go back down on what I believe is principal. Read the memo for yourself. I've talked to, again, people, former staff, who's helped me with some of this information, but most of it I found through a simple records request. So, I just ask guys, read the memo for yourself, decide for yourself, not just on what the city manager has presented, because look at this room, and I believe the other room is full, why was all this necessary? And to, to Ms. Serna's point of what's in our agenda, I was trying to avoid all this. I was, I wanted an investigation done to determine what was in the document true and what wasn't true. She's obviously put a picture up to make that not happen, and I'm fine with that, but I stand on what I wrote in that memo. Thank you.
Thank you. It is the job of the presiding officer to maintain decorum. I've attempted to maintain decorum during this entire meeting. The agenda item has been laid out.
Mayor, could I just, I'm sorry, you didn't see my, I know you can't see the light.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Just before we take the agenda item, I just wanna say one more time to all of the city employees, I appreciate you more than you will ever know. You are well-deserving of any position you have. This council, right here, works for you people. Our city employees work for our people. Let's, don't forget the perspective. We're not supposed to have our agendas, our agenda should be your best concern.
I agree, thank you. The, we have, the item's been laid out, the city manager's presented her position, we've had comments from counsel. If there's no further comments, and I see no, none other indicated, I will entertain a motion.
So, I motion that we deny the mayor's and councilperson Lee's request to call for an investigation of our city manager.
I have a motion, Mayor Protim Kirkland, and a second one, councilmember Plunkett. I will clarify something, this was not a request, this was a consideration by counsel.
Submitted by Mayor Nelson and councilmember Lee.
Requested, consider and act. You have considered it, and you're acting on it now.
Mayor, the motion's been made.
I understand, I understand, but I was providing clarity, thank you so much for that. No further discussion is indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Kirkland.
So, this is a motion to deny, correct? So, yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Council, councilmember Meyer.
Hell, yes.
Count, councilmember Lee.
No.
Councilmember Fossler.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, the motion passes 4 to 1 with the dissenting, the mayor, the motion passes 4 to 1 with the dissenting vote from councilmember Lee. That being said, we are at agenda item-
Mayor, have another motion.
Mayor Protim Kirkland.
I motion to direct the city manager to bring back individual resolutions of support for each of the staff members that were mentioned in the fake dossier from Cheryl.
We have a motion from Mayor Protim Kirkland, and a second one, councilmember Plunkett. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, madam city secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
No.
Councilmember Fossler.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, motion passes 4 to 1 with the-
Mayor, I have a motion.
With the dissenting vote being councilmember Lee. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. I move that the Bastrop City Council formally expresses confidence in the leadership and performance of city manager Sylvia Carrillo Trevino, recognizing her contributions to the efficient management of our city and her dedication to serving the Bastrop community.
We have a motion from councilmember Meyer, I believe the second came from councilmember Plunkett, or Mayor Protim Kirkland. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
I think this is a good time to point out the difference, we've, we've had two investigations since I've been on, well, two proposed investigations since I've been on counsel. One, and, and they were, they were handled by the accused in vastly different ways. One was handled with lawyers, and lies, and misdirection. The other one was handled with openness, directness, and facts in public. And that's why we have what we have tonight, what we've witnessed tonight. And I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the city manager. I have openly, many, many times, said, our greatest achievement that we have had on this council since I've been on is the hiring of Sylvia Carrillo. And I, I can't imagine we'll top it, even if I serve another, you know, four or five years, who knows? Maybe I'll serve as long as Doc. I still doubt we'll, I still doubt we'll top it. And another thing- And another thing, I want to say that when I came in here, I was in agreement with a lot of the comments that this is a giant waste of time. But I have to disagree now, because this city has spoken loudly, and I am so proud of that, because- Because those who want to tear it down and piss and moan about every little thing that they don't like, and just spew the vitriol that is constantly coming out of that group, we all know who they are. I'd love to see that it's been rejected wholeheartedly tonight. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishes to speak before we call for the vote? Seeing none indicated, madam city secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
No.
Councilmember Fossler.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes four to one, with the dissenting vote being from councilmember Lee. We will move to agenda item six. I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion, and a second, we stand adjourned.
Thank you, Bastrop.